Onto Rule 31, dealing with four ball stroke play. So, the rules of golf still apply. Representation of side, same. Just need to make sure there's at least one partner there at a time. An absent partner may join between holes, but not during the hole. Now, 31-3 is a unique to four ball stroke play. As in match play, there's no scorecard necessary. The marker is required to record for each hole only the gross score of whichever's partner's scores to count. So if Bill and I are partners, and Bill has a four on a hole, I could, and let's say I have a five or worse, and Ken is our marker, Ken just needs to record Bill's score of four. He doesn't need to put down a score for me, which is one of the nice things about four ball stroke plays that, you know, if I just have an X on the hole, if I don't finish the hole, then that's okay as long as Bill does have a score. And then, a next point can be overlooked. The gross scores to count must be individually identifiable. Otherwise, the side is disqualified. So in other words, when Ken writes that four down, he needs to make sure he puts it down as Bill's score for the hole, and not just write a four across the two lines for Bill and me. And only one of us, only Bill or I, needs to be, needs to assign the scorecard. Order of play, same as in four ball match play. Ball's belonging may be played in the order the side considers being better. Wrong ball, if a player plays a wrong ball, he incurs two penalty strokes and must correct the mistake. His partner incurs no penalty, even if that wrong ball belongs to him. 31-6, penalty to the side. Really just the same as we saw in four ball match play, the same provisions there. 31-7, disqualification penalties. A, breached by one partner. If either partner incurs a penalty of disqualification under the following, then the side is disqualified. So, for example, if Bill and I are partners, and I go over, and with Ken, one of our fellow competitors, he and I agree to waive the rules, then even though Bill was not part of that, he will also be disqualified. B, breached by both partners. Side is disqualified. Each partner is disqualified under Rule 6-3 or 6-8. For example, if neither one of us is ready, is there at the starting time, five minutes after, or if neither one of us is there to, for example, resume play at the correct time. Or if at the same hole, each partner is in breach of a rule, penalty for which is disqualification from the competition or for a hole. So, where that run into problems is what if, you know, I'm having a terrible hole, and after six or seven shots, I just pick up and tell Bill that the hole is his, and he needs to finish it. And he says, "No problem, I've got it." Then Bill finishes out the hole, we tee off on the next hole, and Bill says, "Oops, you know what? I played a wrong ball back there, and I didn't correct the mistake." Then we don't have a score for that hole, so we would be disqualified. For the hole only, and there's a difference now with 31-7C versus, or is that 30-3F? And all other cases where a breach of a rule would result in disqualification, oh, I'm sorry, I think about the next section, 31-8, but the competitor's disqualified only for the hole at which the breach occurred. So as I said, this is part of appeal of four ball stroke play. That if you have a bad hole, you can pick up, as long as your opponent does have a score for the hole. Now, 31-8 is the one that is different than match play. If a competitor's breach of a rule assists his partner's play, the partner incurs the applicable penalty in addition to any penalty incurred by the player. So that part of it is the same as in four ball match play. What is missing, though, is that there's no provision for the partner to incur the penalty if the breach adversely affects, for example, a fellow competitor's play. In all other cases where a competitor incurs a penalty for breach of a rule, the penalty does not apply to his partner. And, let's see, with the decisions, the very first one, 31/1, which is similar to the match play one. And this can come up a lot, with probably the most common application being pro hams. But just as in match play, whenever possible, the rules are applied only to the competition affected. When it's not possible to separate the competitions, the four ball competition takes precedence. And let's look at the first example. B moves A's ball without authority. So in the four ball competition, A incurs a penalty stroke. This is partner move his ball. But in the individual competition, his partner is just an outside agency. So, under Rule 18-1, there'd be no penalty for the individual competition. So that can be confusing in terms of, from a scoring perspective, that he might have a score, say, five for the hole in the four ball competition, but a score of four for the individual competition. Now, let's look at a new decision for the year, 31-6/1. And it is interesting that, especially with the introduction of the US Four Ball Championships last year, men's and women's, what, to see what, whether any rules incidents came up from that, whether during the qualifying or at the championship itself. And I know Bill was out there at the Olympic Club last year for that, where, you know, where, you know, it was a new experience for the USGA conducting a four ball championship. So, as a result, it's not a surprise that we have a new decision regarding four ball play. And let's look at this, because it is an interesting one that establishes some points that were not known before. In four ball stroke play, A and B are partners. And they return a scorecard with an incorrect score for the 12th hole. The error is discovered before the close of competition. Now, let's look at four examples. A returned a score of four, and B returned a score of five for the hole. A actually took five or more strokes. As A's recorded score was lower than actually taken, the side is disqualified. So, so in other words, they can't merely say, "Oh, well, now we're just going to look at B's score," because the score that's to count on the scorecard is four. And that four was lower than actually taken, so therefore, the side will be disqualified. Second example, A returned a score of four, and B returned a score of five. A incurred a penalty for grounding his club in a hazard, and was aware of the breach before returning the scorecard. Okay, so A sounds a little shifty, because he failed to include that penalty in his score for the hole. Well, since he was aware of that, that new exception to Rule 6-6D does not apply. Now, so therefore, the side is disqualified under Rule 31-7A for returning a lower score for that hole, because the four that was to be their score was not accurate, or was lower than actually their actual score. Third example. A returned a score of four, and B returned a score of five. A incurred a penalty for grounding his club, but he was unaware of that breach. So therefore, the exception to Rule 6-6D applies. As A's score was the score to count on the hole, the committee must apply the two-stroke penalty for breach of Rule 13-4, and the additional two-stroke penalty under Rule 6-6D. So now, all of a sudden, the side's score for the hole goes from four to eight. And then, this is an important part that I'm sure was, you know, that some people would wonder about. The rules do not allow the side to revert to B's score after the scorecard has been returned. In other words, when they return the scorecard, they were saying that A, A's score, that's our score for the hole. And that score is a four. But it turns out, that score really becomes an eight. So they're stuck with an eight now, is their score for the hole.
Normally, all you have to do on the scorecard is return, put a number in each, at each of the eight holes. Don't have to total it, don't have to do anything else. If you put the four and the five on the card, doesn't the committee have to determine which is the gross score?
Well, yeah, it's a good point, that if, that all the players are required to do is put down the four. So you're saying if they put down the four and the five, then doesn't the committee determine what their score is? And you're absolutely right, the committee would then say, "Okay, there's a four, there's a five, four's lower, so four's their score for the hole." So when they make that determination, it's almost the same as if that five wasn't there, when the two numbers are different. Because then, I think, is the next one, yeah, the next one is different. Let's look at that last example, number four. A and B both returned scores of four. A incurred a penalty for grounding his club in a hazard. But B also scored four on the hole. So A's failure to include the penalty does not affect the result of the side's score. Accordingly, no penalty is applicable, and the side's score for the hole is four. So there, if they do put four and four, if the side's scores are the same, and one of those scores then is adjusted, then they do go back to that other score. So if in situation number three, if the scores were four and four, and then it became eight and four, then four would still be their score for the hole. But when the scores are different, like four and five, then the committee is looking at saying, "Okay, four is your score for the hole." And they largely, and necessarily thought about these terms before, but they, it's almost as if that five doesn't exist. What's that? Does not sound fair, Ken?
It's a rule of golf.
So, so it's an interesting one, especially, number, number three's probably the most important one in there. That's one, if that had happened, someone had asked that question a year ago, I'm not sure what the answer would have been, or at least what I would have said the answer was. All right, any questions on Rule 31? All right, onto Rule 32, bogey, par, and stableford competitions. The most important thing to keep in mind with these, that these are all forms of stroke play. So that means that you do hole out, but the great benefit of this form of play is that if you're having a bad hole, you can just pick up, and you, in a bogey-par competition, you lose the hole, or in stableford, you just don't earn any points for that hole. So it's, so it's a nice format where you can have, say, 156 players playing against each other, but you don't have to have the drudgery of everyone holing out every single hole. So if someone has a really bad hole, and you pick up, go to the next hole with minimal consequence. So first, with bogey and par competitions, let's talk about what they are. A par competition, you're basically playing a match against an opponent who scores a putt on every hole. And you try to do as well as you can against him. And obviously, he's pretty steady, so you need to do well. So if you birdie the first hole, you go one up, and then if you bogey the next three, then you go two down. And the winner is the person who's the most successful at the end. And so the winner could well be somebody who is six down after 18 holes. You don't stop when, for example, if you're five down with four to play, you keep playing. And the winner, like I said, is whoever does the best, which might be being three, four, or five down after 18 holes. And a bogey competition is not merely par plus one. It's a, it's the old bogey type of scoring, where it's really a relaxed form of par. Where let's say, if a golf course is a par 72, the bogey score might be something like 76, where a 450-yard par four might be a par four, but it might be a bogey five. A 240-yard par three might be a bogey four. So you have some holes that are kind of in-between pars that are bumped up a little bit, and that's all that bogeys means. The marker is responsible for marking only the gross number of strokes for each hole, where the player makes a net score equal to or less than the fixed score. And then we have several notes telling us what to do when the player breaches certain rules, and we really won't go through all that. Stableford competitions. Oh, and again, with bogey and par competitions, if you just pick up on a hole, it means you lose the hole. So, that's okay. Stableford competitions, that I know, you know, Bill's done a really good job with trying to introduce this as much as possible, because I think it's a terrific form of play. It's fun, it keeps play moving, and it's, for some reason, just hasn't quite caught on in this country. In many parts of the world, you know, especially, say, Australia, it is the predominant form of play at the club level. That, you know, I think most club competitions, probably 80, 90% of them in Australia are played at stableford. So very popular, because you can have a large individual competition, people playing against each other, but you can still keep play moving by, you know, because if you know you're not going to earn enough points for the hole, you just pick up and go on. So the, when a committee has a stableford competition, it does need to indicate what the fixed score is. That usually, the fixed score will be par, but, you know, it might not always be the case. For example, if you have a tournament for beginners, the fixed score might be bogey or double bogey, or something like that. So that's something the committee would need to stipulate. And the winner is the competitor who scores the highest number of points. And the marker just needs to record the gross scores for each hole at which the net score earns one or more points. Then notes talking about how penalties are applied in various situations. 32-2, disqualification penalties. If the player incurs a penalty of disqualification under these rules, he is disqualified. Again, don't, you don't need to know all these, just know that there is a list, so that if someone incurs, breaches a rule for which the penalty is disqualification, that you know at least to look to this list to see what that means, to see whether he's disqualified from the competition or just for that hole.
There's a question online about Decision 32-1B/1. And the way it's stated is this. Concerning Decision 32-1B/1, if a player has a court team decap of zero and the par is 72, holds one and two are par fours, and a player scores six on each of those holes, zero points, and he makes pars the rest of the way. In the stableford growth, he would score 32 points, and he would shoot 76 in a stroke play tournament. After returning the card, he discovers that he had 15 clubs, and notifies the committee. And it says, in stroke play, it seems the player gets eight penalty strokes. And then he states that it appears to be none in stableford, but that's not necessarily true, because I think he's missing the idea of Note 3 under Rule 32.
So, in stableford, a player has, let's say, a triple bogey or worse on the first two holes, and then he pars remaining 16 holes. And then, before he returns his scorecard, he realizes he has too many clubs. Or after he returns his scorecard, he realizes he has too many clubs, but before the competition closes. So how does he apply the penalty? There, we look to Note 3, which says, and let's look at this together. If the competitor incurs the additional two-stroke penalty, provide an exception to 6-6D, that additional penalty is applied by deducting two points from the total points applied for the round. However, neither penalty, okay. And then we also need, is there something about clubs? Oh, yeah, then we also looked at Note 1 first. If a competitor's in breach of a rule for which there's a maximum penalty per round, he must report the facts to the committee. If he fails to do so, he is disqualified. The committee will, from the total points scored for the round, deduct two points for each hole at which any breach occurred, with a maximum reduction per round of four points. So what's kind of interesting, we're just looking at the first sentence of Note 1. And I'm trying to think if that's consistent with 6-6D, with the exception to that. Because, yeah, so I'm thinking, if you're unaware that you're in breach of a rule for which there's a maximum penalty, yeah, I'm not sure if that's accurate, if you should be disqualified anymore, if you're unaware of the facts. But let's say that, let's forget the, if we can, that minor detail. A minor detail, the rule would say this player should be disqualified. But let's say, if that sentence did not exist, and, boy, so he's, what's he going to do? So would he deduct two points for each hole at which any breach occurred with a maximum reduction per round? So would he wind up deducting a total of four plus six points? Is that right? He deducts four points for the 14 club breach, and then two points for the scorecard error?
Well, and I think his point here is that on the first two holes, the player's score, has a score for which he gets zero points anyway.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I think what it means in Note 1, where it says deduct two points for each hole at which any breach occurred, what, that does not mean from each hole, it's for each hole. So you deduct from the total number of points from the round, the full points. So, so the scores on the first two holes don't matter. And really, the reason this penalty structure, this penalty statement is structured the way it is, is really to ensure that this person, this example, would be penalized, that he doesn't get quote-unquote "lucky" with his bad play and escape penalty.
So I understand this. In this gentleman's example, where the guy scored zero points on hold one, zero points on hold two, had two points on the other 16 holes, and had 32 points, returns his scorecard, and then it's discovered that he has 15 strokes. It won't have any effect on the penalty for holds one and two, but his 32 points would turn into 28, is that correct?
Well, I think it would turn into 26, because I think, under Note 1, he would deduct four points. But then, I think, under Note 3, for the scorecard error, he would deduct two more. Is that, is that the way you read it, Dan?
But the very last sentence is, however, neither penalty applies when a breach of 6-6 does not affect the points scored in the hole. Points scored in the hole are zero.
So it'd be 28.
Oh. Neither penalty. This, what's interesting is the penalty is not necessarily applied to those two holes. I mean, the breach occurred at those two holes, but the penalty isn't applied to them.
John, there's a rule decision that covers this precise situation. I, I shouldn't say my background, but I think the guy gets, I think the guy gets lucky in this situation.
So is this what, let's see what, let's see, 32-1B/1 is new, but it doesn't involve an adjustment penalty?
If you look at the very last sentence of 32-1B/1, that reiterates the fact that if he got zero points, he's not going to be, no penalty would be applicable, because the breach does not affect the score of the hole.
Yeah, I wonder, though, in this case, this was a two-stroke penalty, so it's not an adjustment penalty. And that's what makes me wonder if the result's different. Because in this case, in the decision, the penalty is being applied to a specific hole. In the 15 club case, you're not necessarily applying it to the first two holes, you're deducting from points from the total points.
Could you go to minus points in that case?
You could, I mean, if a player had a really, really bad round, and let's say he earned, yeah, and let's say, yeah, and let's say that a player scored a total of two points for the round, and he had too many clubs. Yeah, he could wind up with minus two points.
When you correct the situation that you're trying to resolve here, where he got zero on the first two holes, and you're saying you couldn't go below zero?
Well,
But that's on a hole versus a round. Stableford, you do it on the round, you don't do it on the hole. And this last line says, you don't do it on the hole. So I think he gets, he gets four points.
The way I read this is that he would get four points for Note 1. And to your point, there would be zero points under Note 3, because it did not affect the score at the first hole and the second hole, which is what the breach of Rule 4-4A talked about.
Yeah, I don't know, but it, because I wonder, because where you're not, with this, with Note 1, you're really not looking at a score for a hole. You're just deducting points from the total at the end of the round. So in that regard, it doesn't matter what his scores for the first two holes are.
Right.
I don't know, and I'm, I'm inclined to think he gets a total of six, but I'm a little more concerned with that. For sentence of Note 1. No, I don't know, I'll send a note to David Stapler tomorrow, ask him. So, yeah, I'll have him remember, but that's dog ear this page. That's, that's a good question. All right, well, Bill, have you and Jeff have good luck with all the stableford this year? With all that in mind. All right, so anything else on stableford, now that we've mastered that? Onto Rule 33. And this is a rule, as you can tell from the title, it's really from the committee, that Rule 6, which we covered weeks ago, outlines the player's responsibilities. And Rule 33 is, to a large degree, a companion rule that outlines the committee's responsibilities. That Rule 33-1 provides, the committee must establish the conditions under which a competition is to be played. And conditions is a broad term. It could include who's eligible, what the schedule is, what to do if there's a tie, if it's gross or net, how many holes there are, and so forth. The committee has no power to rule the rule of golf. And then, this next one was in addition for this year, for emphasis, before it had been tucked away in a decision. Number of holes of a stipulated round must not be reduced once play has commenced in that round. So, for example, if you have an 18-hole comp, for example, an 18-hole, you know, high school competition, terrible wet, cold weather, you just can't say after 14 holes, "Sorry, that's it," and base it, base the winner on those scores for 14 holes. Isn't that right, Bill? No, 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 first, let me clarify, Bill has never done that, and will never do that.
But we,
But he's familiar with the people that do it.
We have, we have tried to get the WIA to say that the 36-hole tournament is four nine-hole round. Problem is, they're teaming people off one and 10, and it gets more convoluted than what you think.
Well, I talked to, um, Chafren King, I think it was last year, and he said he was a competitor making stipulated rounds nine holes.
It works for the boys, but not the girls, because the divisions tee off different teams.
Oh, okay.
The girls can be in the same division going off of different tees, and that's where it does not work.
Well, I think Bill and Ken's idea is a good one, that if a committee has, say, an 18-hole competition, and the weather is looking shaky, and they could certainly say, "Okay, we're going to play two nine-hole stipulated rounds." So if you're unable to complete a full 18, but at least get a nine in, you can base the winner on those nine-hole scores. But that works only, well, not only, but works especially well if everybody's teeing off the same hole. If they're not, if they're teeing off one and 10, then you're really, you haven't accomplished that much.
Would a rule like that, if the committee were unprepared, and they had to do it at the last moment, is a verbal instruction considered a condition of the competition?
So if at the last minute, before players go out, the starters on one and 10 or whatever, you tell them that, you know, "Just so you know, we're playing two nine-hole stipulated rounds." Yeah, I think that'd be okay. Then, let's see, 33-1 goes on to say that, as we've seen, some of the rules for stroke play and match play are so different, and you really can't combine the two and allow to play the two concurrently. In stroke play, the committee may limit a referee's duties, with the most common example being that, say, perhaps not allowing any ref, just any referee to mark an area of the ground and repair, only letting a rover do that to ensure consistent treatment of that area. Rule 33-2A, the committee must, must define accurate, uh, the committee must, must define accurately. It's not a recommendation, it's a requirement. Needs to define the course, out-of-bounds, water hazards, ground under repair, obstructions in integral parts of the course. So what that means is, we've talked about, is if a course does not mark its water hazards, then sometimes the rules of golf aren't going to be able to answer the questions that arise. So the rules are really, uh, based on the assumption that the course has been marked as required. Now, rule 33-2B, uh, new holes should be made on the day in which a stroke play competition begins. Requirement that all players in a single round play with each hole cut in the same position. And it's interesting how much that has changed over the years. I remember reading an account of Ben Hogan's win in 1953 British Open that said that, you know, first day, they cut the holes, and then that's it for the tournament. That they play all four rounds with the holes cut in the same location, which is, uh, which is, which does simplify things from an administrative perspective. I, it's kind of interesting that sometimes I wonder if committees, you know, try to almost outthink themselves with hole locations, and sometimes create more problems than, than they solve. Let's see, practice round, 33-2D, course unplayable. And it's interesting that there is an important point, uh, buried in here. It says, as we know, in both match play and stroke play, the committee may temporarily suspend play. But then it says that only in stroke play may a committee cancel a round. That sometimes committees will do that, saying, look, it was raining when the players teed off, and it rained harder and harder and harder. Course became unplayable, we couldn't play anymore. You know, the first group only played seven holes, they played in horrible conditions. In fairness to them and the others on the course, we're going to cancel the entire round, so everybody starts fresh tomorrow. Uh, that, that's okay doing stroke play, but not in match play. So in match play, take the extreme case of Bill and I are playing a match, we both tee off number one, the committee suspends play, and let's say even if play is going to be resumed two days later, they can't just say, guys, just tee off number one, start from there. No, we have to go back out to wherever we were in the first fairway or first rough and resume from there. Because whatever you do in, uh, match play, that counts. Bill, and you were at the US Mid-Am in Kiowa with that interesting story, right, where that, that is borderline whether a, the conditions were such that they should start a match. And, well, and there's a big story behind it, but I think was ultimately one player teed off an awful shot into the tall grass, then uh, the committee suspended play. So then his opponent never teed off. And so when they came back out to resume the play, you know, first.
Sunny and 75 the next day.
Sunny and 75, and, you know, one, the first player, did he even have a lost ball?
Yeah.
He got, he got a lost ball, and the other players had just played the hole with a couple of six sirens or something, and won it.
There was a little bit more to it.
Yeah, yeah.
The starter didn't have his radio on, and everybody heard, do not let the match start. And by the time people could run out, I mean, and it was pouring like a torrential rainstorm. And the guy in pouring rain skanked one into the basket. And then the tournament director came running out, stopped play. And the next morning, they resumed play. And the gentleman that had not teed off, teed off with a five iron, bunted it down the middle, bunted it in front of the green, chipped on and two putted for a two. The other guy made six. And, and I'm not kidding you, the match was won, one up, by the player that did not start play in the ring.
Of course.
And it, it didn't sit well with a lot of officials.
All right.
What did they want? What are the officials that were objective? Do they, whatever, they want to start over?
There was the thought that there may have been committee errors, and that the fair thing to do would be to let them restart. But as John mentioned, there is nothing that allows you to cancel a portion of a match that's come in.
All right, 33-3, uh, the committee must establish starting times and groupings. That has a, a useful, uh, suggestion for committees. Let's say at the club level, if you have a competition, no, match play competition over a month, and you might give each, uh, uh, match a week within which to be played, it's helpful to go ahead and assign them a starting time on the last day. So therefore, for example, if Dan and I have until next Tuesday to play a match, but we just can't coordinate our schedules to play before then, but if the committee gives us a 9:10 starting time on Tuesday, then whoever's not there at 9:10 loses, and it becomes easy. Whereas if neither one of us is there on Tuesday, and we don't have a starting time, then, you know, the committee has an awkward, uh, situation.
It's the wording of this rule that allows the players to not be penalized for starting five minutes early under rule 6-3. You know, for instance, if you and I schedule a match next Saturday at 10 o'clock in the morning, and we play at any point before 9:55 next Saturday morning, without this rule, we would be both disqualified, would we not?
Uh, you know, a little bit diff, I mean, I, I think the starting time mentioned here is just kind of a last resort. But it, it also allows players to play at an earlier time, and that time could be one minute before, it could be 72 hours before. 33-4, uh, committee must publish a stroke table. 33-5 is a, uh, a stroke play-only rule, uh, for giving each, uh, player a scorecard. And it also outlines what the committee is responsible for. We saw in rule six, what the player is responsible for with the scorecards, that his marker has to sign the scorecard, he has to sign the scorecard, the gross scores, uh, must be there, and, uh, must be accurate. His handicap must be recorded on the scorecard, but it's the committee's responsibility to add the scores, to apply the handicap, then in, say, in a stableford competition, to determine the result of each hole. So what that means is that, say, ima, imagine what a headache a committee would have. Fix things out in net, four-ball, state tournament. Let's think where the committee has to determine for each hole. Okay, what's the, uh, the, uh, net, the sides, net score for each hole? And then, how does that earn them any points? And go through all that, and that, uh, that can be a headache. Uh, 33-6, the committee must announce the man or day and time for the decision of a half-match or tie. Uh, and the only, uh, prohibitions are that a half-match must not be decided by stroke play, and a tie in stroke play must not be, uh, decided by a match. Uh, any other form of determining a tie is okay, whether it's a toss of the coin or what have you, but the most important thing for a committee is to announce that in advance, uh, before players play. It really is amazing how sometimes committees will call, saying, look, we started our club championship in, in a three-way tie, uh, what should we do now? And, uh, you know, because you want players to know what they're getting into, and if they know in advance that it's going to be a hole-by-hole playoff start on number 10, then they, they know what they're getting into. But if, just at this point in the moment, you say, oh, we're going to match scorecards, start on hole number 13, then players might not be as happy. Now, 33-7, uh, penalty of disqualification may, in exceptional, emphasis on exceptional individual cases, be waived, modified, or imposed if the committee considers such action warranted. So a disqualification can be waived. So a player might be disqualified, for example, for being eight minutes late, but if he has an old-world excuse, that disqualification penalty can be waived. Can be modified. The committee might say, well, instead of disqualifying you, it'll be a two-stroke penalty, or might be imposed, saying, well, uh, you're going to go from no penalty to disqualification penalty, because what you did was so offensive. And then, but it's interesting to note that any penalty less than disqualification must not be waived or modified. So in other words, if someone imposes a two-stroke penalty, you can't just waive that penalty, uh, or reduce that penalty from two strokes to one stroke. And this used in the art of equity, right, Dan? And then what, what's interesting, what Bill's pointed out, is how this applies to the, uh, checkpoint system for pace of play, where, uh, players are told, and they are, are very carefully told, if they miss, say, a second checkpoint, that they are all liable to one penalty stroke, uh, pending any appeal by them at the end of the round. Because the USGA knows that they can't sell them, well, you have a penalty stroke, and oh, by the way, yeah, we're later going to waive that penalty because you had a legitimate reason for having this second checkpoint. Uh, so that's why that, uh, careful language is used, uh, with that pace of play policy. If a committee considers a player's guilty of a serious breach of etiquette, it may impose a penalty of disqualification. And for what that means, let's look at decision 33-7 slash 8. That defines that a serious breach of etiquette is behavior by a player that shows a significant disregard for an aspect of etiquette section, such as intentionally distracting another player or intentionally offending someone. And while a player may dis, while a committee may disqualify a player under rule 33-7 for a single act, in most cases, it's recommended such a penalty be imposed only in the event of a further serious breach. In other words, you go up, warn a player, saying, you need to stop throwing your clubs or whatever he's doing. And if he continues to do it, then, uh, disqualify him. Uh, local rules, uh, committee may establish local rules for local abnormal conditions if they're consistent with the policy set forth in appendix one, and may not waive or modify a rule. So you can't have a local rule saying, uh, you know, treat out-of-bounds as a lateral water hazard. In appendix one, uh, which we won't go over, really is a useful, though, it's kind of a nice checklist for a committee, uh, for each competition, uh, to make sure it's thought of everything, then if necessary, your committee can just plagiarize straight out of it and copy the, uh, specimen local rules from it, which is always a good, good thing to be, if the committee's, is then if a player says, oh, you know, that's a stupid local, you know, it's way it's worded, just say, well, that's the way the USGA and I wrote it. You know, talk to them about it. All right, now let's look at, uh, some decisions. Uh, let's look at 33/2 on page 498, which is a new decision uh, for this year. And it covers a situation that does come up every now and then, that can lead, lead committees scratching its head, their heads as to what to do. In match play, player A withdraws, uh, before his next match. What's the proper procedure with respect to the draw if the committee has not specified a relevant procedure? Well, the committee must proceed in accordance with equity. Depending on the circumstances, the options include, they could, one, just say that the, the next opponent wins by default, which is, you know, what happens the most. But if this occurs before A's first match, so let's say there was maybe stroke play qualifying followed by match play, then if time permits, the committee could, if it wanted, doesn't have to produce a whole new match play draw, adding in someone else. Uh, or, uh, replace, uh, that, just simply replace that player with a player from the reserve list, which is something that, uh, you often don't have, but perhaps should have. Or C, where players have qualified through stroke play, replace A with a player who's now judged to be the final qualifier. So if A had eventually just beaten one player on the sixth playoff hole, then you could say, okay, that one player they defeated, you could plug him in. And that, do that. Or uh, if A withdraws after his first, uh, match, require all players eliminated by A to playoff for his position. So a committee could do any, any of that, and certainly the first one, just saying his opponent wins by default is the simplest, and I think in most cases is what people often expect the committee to do.
In a USGA championship amateur tournament, has there ever been a player after his first match that has withdrawn? More likely to be injured?
You know, I was told a story, I think it was at the women's mid-am, where after the 36 holes of stroke play qualifying, the match play draw is made. And then either a player withdraws or is then disqualified. So one of the 64 players. So then the USGA had to think, and this is, you know, the night before match play starts, which is kind of a hectic time, you know, what, what do we do? Uh, and what they did, and I think their position going forward is that, you know, once that match play draw is made, and especially once it's been made to the public, you know, there's just, just leave it be. There'd just be too much confusion and, uh, and headache, trying to redo it and trying to alert everyone as to what the next, what the new match play draw is.
Would sort of beg this question, and I hope this is not happening. If there is a player, we have state AM, state match, but qualifying, and we have 10 spots for 100 players, and a person shoots a score that is inside those 10 spots, and he says, I can't play.
Okay.
Are we better off withdrawing him before the determination? After, and then taking the first alternate?
Wait, so, so he tells you he can't play after his qualifying round's over, after that? Or even drawing, or?
Well, usually how it happens is, you know, you have 100 players, 10 spots, or whatever it is. The guy shoots 68. Let's say he's meddling, hands in his scorecard, and he says, no matter whether, I mean, if I don't qualify, I'm, it doesn't matter. But if I qualify, I can't play.
Okay.
In the, in.
Okay, so he's just playing in the qualifier just for the experience?
Get his money's worth, probably worth.
Make a field.
How would you proceed? Would you withdraw the player from the entire qualifying where it's not even a factor? Or would you consider him to have qualified, at which point we would take the first alternate after the fact?
Okay, well, that's an interesting point. So there can be other things regarding points and so forth, and other, you know, prizes or anything. Um, I suppose my instinct would be to let him qualify as one of the 10, and then treat it as a draw, and then get the first alternate.
Because he did play the round.
Yeah, yeah, so he did play the round, so he should earn whatever he earns, you know, in terms of points or prizes, so. So, and I think that makes sense, and either way, you should wind up with the same result, you know, with the, either way, the first alternate.
And like the USGA, when you take two alternates, and the only way that's going to fit someone off is if you're the third alternate.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Or would have been the third alternate.
Yeah.
And you are not becoming the second alternate at that point.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, because I'm trying to think, what, what's the biggest danger? It's probably what you said, is that it winds up maybe uh, running beyond the two alternates.
Uh, the gentleman on here says there was the WD at the USGA Public Links Championship, but they did not add the player. They just.
Oh, okay.
Gave the default to the next opponent.
Oh, okay.
We had it happen frequently, because years ago, when the public links players were not eligible to play in the state amateur championship, had qualified for, they gave about 10 spots. And how were they determined? Most by qualifying for the USGA Public Links Championship. And a lot of guys would come in here and say, yeah, I'm just shooting for a state AM spot, you know, I got, uh, I'm not, i- if I qualify, I'm not going. So we let us know that in advance. So we just got it, and, uh, we put them in the, uh, the state AM qualifying, but not in the, uh, USGA.
Okay. So that, that can be all complicated stuff. But it's good now to have some guidance, uh, of what, what the, for what, at least the committee's options are. And, you know, keep in mind that, you know, we, or at least I tend to think of uh, this in the situ, in the format of, say, USGA match play championship, they got 36 holes of stroke play, then the very next day you start match play, you know, whereas that's pretty uncommon. It's much more common that, Bill said, with state match play, that the, uh, the first match is a week or two later, and, and so where, where there's more time to, uh, correct things. Let's see, some other decisions. Yeah, we touched on this, I think, the other week, uh, 33-2A/16, about what to do with a boundary wall. And you do see that occasionally where you have a, either a wall erected by the committee or an existing stone wall from the farm or whatever, the property was in its former life. I, just something for committees to be aware of, the definition of out of bounds is silent as to what defines out of bounds if a wall is used. So the committee needs to say whether the inside or outside face of the wall defines out of bounds. Our decision thirty-three dash two A slash nineteen on the other page, you know, walks us through a situation that does come up and can be, can be rather complicated, but gives some good guidance. In stroke play, a boundary line's been altered through the unauthorized removal of a boundary stake. So it could have been with another player, it could have been a spectator, it could have been a homeowner, or a mower. So there is now an area X, which is in bounds if the removed stake is disregarded and out of bounds if the removed stake is replaced. So we'll go through two versions of this. A's ball comes resting area X. A is aware that the boundary has been altered. For example, he sees the white bound, boundary stake line on the ground. He asked the committee for a ruling. What should the committee do? Well, the committee should replace the removed stake, i.e. restore the boundary line and require A to proceed under rule twenty-seven dash one, unless the committee knows that one or more preceding players had, in ignorance of the fact that the stake had been removed, played from area X. In that case, the committee should allow the altered boundary line to stand for the remainder of the competition, A play his ball as it lay. So that, what that gets at is the need for the committee in a stroke play competition to make sure that everybody plays the course the same way, that if somebody hits a ball into area X, that that's treated the same for all players. Our next question, what would the ruling be if the committee determines that one or more competitors had ignorance of the fact that the stake was missing, played from area X, and one or more competitors had treated area X as out of bounds? So now they have a bit of a mess. And it's a kind of an interesting, and I guess you'd say pragmatic answer. If the inconsistent treatment of area X could significantly affect the result of the competition, round should be canceled, replayed, otherwise round should stand. And as any tournament administrator knows, the prospect of canceling, replaying a round is absolutely the last thing you want to do. That is just a huge headache on you, on the players, on the course. And so often, people convince themselves, no, it didn't significantly affect the competition and let it go with that. All right, decision thirty-three dash two B slash one point five is an interesting case. I know we talked about that there's a WSGA event with a hole location issue a number of years ago, and that, but this decision actually came from incident that happened at the British Open qualifier at Sunningdale, where several players had played a hole and had four putting, five putting, six putting, and the committee actually moved the hole during the rounds. So the question is, what are the committee's options? And first, I like the first line of the answer. It just lets you know, there's no good solution. You're just trying to do the best you can. So what are the committee's options? Have play continue with the whole location unchanged on the basis that the conditions are the same for all players in the field, which some people would say is, is really a definition of fair, that fair means all players are treated the same way. Other, other options, keep the hole in the same location, but take some action such as watering it between groups to make the whole location less severe. Third option, declare the round null and void and have all players start the round again, which we've said is something they desperately want to avoid. And then D, suspend play, relocate the hole, and have the players who played the hole return the conclusion of their rounds to replay the hole. So that is pretty unusual, and that's something that RNA had the players do there before this decision was written, which raised some eyebrows. But again, it's, you know, when you're running a competition, especially like that, there's a thirty-six hole, one day competition, and the forecast of weather for the next several days was absolutely horrible, and they were just trying to do whatever they could to get things done, which is definitely understandable. Or have all players, all players disregard their score for the hole in question and play another hole for their score for the hole. And then it goes on, say, these last two options should be taken only in extreme circumstances because obviously they alter the stipulated rounds.
Are those listed in order and which are you? Without saying it, likely to use?
Are they listed in the order you're likely to use? Probably, I think you could argue whether A and B, which is more likely. There's one difference between A and B is that sometimes, or maybe often, a whole location gets worse during the day as the green gets drier and drier and drier. So in that regard, you could argue that the players who played it early in the morning had advantage over those who played late in that. And when they saw that, for example, at eighteen Olympic in nineteen ninety-eight US Open, second round, where, you know, there's that famous picture of Payne Stewart had a twenty or thirty foot putt, it came up to the hole and it came back to him. That in the morning, that wasn't an issue, but it was just during the day as the green dried out, that became an issue. So you could argue that watering it actually makes it fair because everybody's treated the same. But then, on the other hand, I remember on my least pleasant days of my life was the final day at Shinnecock in two thousand and four US Open, I was in the scoring trail on the eighteenth hole, accepting player's scorecards. And the very first group, and just hearing all the chatter on the radio, just, there was chaos out there. You know, players four, five, six putting, doing this and that, and greens were, it was absolutely out of control. And you hear on the seventh hole, there were Dan Par three, that I think the first two groups, there were, I think, a five and three sixes made on the hole. And one player, I'd heard from three feet away, had putted into a bunker, something like that. And they kept the hole where it was, but they watered it between groups later in the day, and there were other greens they were watering during the day to try to calm things down. But when the very first group came in, I was kind of steeling myself for an unpleasant afternoon. And what happened? And I was saying, well, the seventh hole, that happened, you know, two and a half hours ago, you know, maybe they'll, they'll forgotten about it by then. But just to kind of prime the pump, they finished the eighteenth hole. As soon as they finished eighteen, someone goes out with a hose, start watering eighteen. So the first thing they come in and say, why are you watering the eighteenth green after we finished it? You know, we could have used that beforehand. And, you know, I didn't have a good answer to that. And then, you know, that was their point, saying, you know, I want to know why was the seventh green watered after we played through there? And they asked to speak to another USGA official, I was happy to find someone else for them to talk to. And this person said, well, if we hadn't watered it, we would have had a real train wreck out there. I said, well, what are you talking about? You know, Kevin here putted into a bunker from three feet, you know, why not let everyone else do that? And that's kind of what that first point's getting at, is you could argue that leaving something the way it is in some cases is the fair thing to do. Because even though it's not a reasonable hole location, that it's, at least all people have to deal with it the same way.
Well, I will say, when it happened, G did not set the whole location. And one of the cruelest things I've ever seen in my whole life is for ten hours, he stood between the, well, actually next to the sixth green when it happened. And essentially took the heat. And when he wasn't taking the heat, he was watering the whole location. And, you know, the day got done, it wasn't a shiny moment, but, you know, it happened. But having not set the whole location and to sit there and take the heat, I, I thought was tremendous.
There was a few times I ever got threatened, you know, by various things. We had about a six hole back hole, you know, like that.
People eating lunch?
Yeah.
John, the shocking thing was that day that players would miss from two or three or four feet. And the rules were no different then for two rules, twenty-seven one A and twenty-eight A were the same then as they are now. And out of two hundred and twenty-four players, two hundred of them putted off this green. Not one of the two hundred conceded on broken disc. And I mean, when these people missed two foot putts, this wasn't a bunker shot, this rolled ninety yards away from the hole. It was great time. Moving.
All right. Let's see, decision thirty-three dash five slash one is just useful for a committee to know that in a hole by hole playoff, players are not required to have a scorecard, you know, as is, you know, because usually the committee will just keep their score. Thirty-three dash six slash three, which also involves playoffs. And it's an interesting one, a useful one to know because a lot of people will remember the image from nineteen sixty-two US Open where in the, after the, on the eighteenth green of their playoff, Ronald Palmer lifts Jack Nicklaus's ball marker and shakes his hand, trying to say, you know, nice job, I concede, you win. And then Joe Dye from USGA rushed out on the green saying, no, 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 this is stroke play, you need the hole out. Well, this decision makes it clear that in a stroke play playoff, even though it is stroke play, that one of the players may concede defeat, in which case the other does not have to finish the hole. So you can concede defeat, but you can't concede a specific stroke. Yeah. Thirty-three dash three, or thirty-three dash six slash three. Yeah, yeah, it's interesting. I do not know if that came up after Oakmont in sixty-two. I doubt, my guess is that it didn't exist in nineteen sixty-two, but I couldn't tell you for sure.
We had this, I had a hard time with Tom Schmidt and I had a disagreement.
No, you and Tom Schmidt had a disagreement with me, and I was wrong and you two were right. I insisted that they had to finish both players' holes against the hole. And they pointed out that because of this decision, they do not. One guy had hit four balls in the water, and it became very clear that he was not our qualifier.
And he would have had to go over, you know, standing on the tee, realizing that the match was over. So why have to go over there and have to do so?
He did get the fifth shot, I agree. However, it was his ninth ball.
All right, that decision thirty-three dash seven slash six is kind of an interesting case, and this actually happened at the US Mid-Am there in two thousand and eight at Mawkey Country Club during stroke play, where it had been reported that a player, now I forget exactly what he did, he was using a very large ball marker, like a poker chip type ball marker, but he was repeatedly replacing the ball closer to the hole on the putting green. And a committee interviewed him afterwards, and he sort of acknowledged that. And, and in the committee, I actually watched him last several holes, seeing if he did that. Because I'm, I was one person watching him, and sure enough, he did it on basically every hole. What should the committee do? And the committee has, has a choice, you could have two options. You can say, well, each, each green just played from the wrong place, add two penalty strokes and go on. But the fact that he's repeatedly does this shows it's probably not just an accident, that it really shows he's trying to cheat. And therefore, under rule thirty-three dash seven, it'd be a good example of imposing the penalty of disqualification in an exceptional individual case.
With this, the analogies, if someone repeatedly had someone on the extension of their liner play, like you see on the LPGA, where the caddie stands behind, and he continually did it, or was reported to have done it?
Well, and with the caddy standing behind the player, that it, I don't think the caddy or the player necessarily trying to cheat. They might either be ignorant of the rule or might just not be aware that it's on or close to an extension. But often with that, I know on the LPGA, the caddies will often just some, well, not often, but sometimes just not take much of a step, just one step to the side, which is that close to an extension of the line. I, I think that that's a little bit different. I think that's just kind of a lack of knowledge rather than that. You decided to cheat. Let's see, thirty-three dash eight slash two establishes the principle that unfortunately it's not permissible to locate a dropping zone on the green side of a water hazard, which, you know, which is a real concern for some golf courses. You know, decision thirty-three dash eight slash thirteen, local rule for ball deflected by power line. First point is that this is a local rule, unless the committee has put this into effect, if your ball strikes a power line through upper of the green and under rule nineteen dash one, just play the ball as it lies. But if the committee does adopt this local rule, it's important to note that the local rule does not give the player an option, it requires the player to replay the stroke. Some things that, I think it's on, I believe it's on a, is it on a hard card bill about turf plugs or not, one and a quarter inches diameter? Yeah, so decision thirty-three dash eight slash thirty just authorizes that, that sometimes you'll have turf plugs that are, might be eight inches or hexagonal, just to repair a putting green, the committee may by local allow players to treat those just as they would old hole plugs.
The big thing now are those fifteen inch cup. The large hole.
Oh, I didn't think of that.
A lot of golfers would use the large cup.
You know, that's an interesting question, is the eighteen inch cup, you're saying when it's been replaced at the end of the tournament? So I guess the first question, is that an old hole plug? Because it is a hole, it's just a hole that doesn't conform to the rules.
How can it be a hole plug? A hole by definition is four and a half, one and a quarter.
Well, I, I'm wondering, what, it's certainly not a conforming hole, but is it still a hole? I don't know, and that's.
If you go down that route, then every time somebody does anything to the green, it's a hole, a non-conforming hole.
Okay.
I mean, are you saying that?
Well, I'm just wondering if there's no local rule in effect, how would you rule? But that, that shouldn't be an issue if it's a tournament.
Because you see that quite often these days, more and more courses are plugging their greens on a whatever day with a fifteen inch hole plug on the hole. Rather live. I mean, it certainly catches your eye. I mean, it wouldn't matter whether it's run under a theater or a hole plug. Well, it might be, it might have occurred at a course where we have.
Well, tell me, I'm curious, how deep is the fifteen inch hole? I've never seen that, I'm curious.
When we were down in Indiana, I think Ted Bishop, former president of the PGA, announced that that is one of the things he does at his local court to try to generate interest
Well, and next time you see that, send me a picture, I'd just be curious. All right, well, it's actually, we got, one, one, one more, just to emphasize, thirty-three dash eight slash forty-two, spent a minute talking about environmentally sensitive areas, that these are areas that, or that the course has marked as ESAs because essentially the government has forced the course to do so. And dealing with environmentally sensitive areas from a rules perspective is pain in the neck because the local rule is fairly cumbersome, it's not easily understood. So first point is just to use a local rule for environmentally sensitive areas only when absolutely necessary. And secondly, some of the key points are that there's a penalty only from, for playing from the area or for playing even from outside the area or that interferes with your play. There's no penalty merely for walking into the hazard or, or the area, for example, to retrieve a ball. But I do like how this decision says, you know, there's no penalty under the rules of golf, but the player may have broken the law or be subject. but the player may have broken the law or be subject to other disciplinary, uh, action. Am I with that? So any questions on rule thirty-three? Yeah.
There's probably a decision on it, but where the committee chooses to break a tie by scorecard playoff, is there a preferred way?
Oh.
Eighteen hole versus the number one.
All right, the good question is, is there a preferred way to match scorecards? And if there is, and it's in the, fortunately in appendix one, I believe. If you turn pages at five seventy, yeah, five seventy has the USGA recommendation for matching scorecards. And C says matching scorecards is recommended, uh, if you can't play, uh, and, and what's interesting is they don't necessarily recommend a specific method. They say an acceptable method of matching cards is to determine the winner on the basis of the best score of the last nine holes. And then you run, and then it goes on to say that if, say you have a one ten tee start, you know, clarify what last nine means, that last nine means holes ten through eighteen, uh, for example. Then if the last nine on the, I mean, the aggregate scores are the same, then look at the last six, last three, last hole. And then if you're really concerned, then you have to say, okay, if the last hole still has a tie, then what? Then do you repeat this on the first nine, something like that?
With regard to point C under that, it doesn't say, but is that somewhat under the notion that players are likely to tee off one in ten?
Uh, yeah, I, I think that last point, last sentence of the first part of that, if the methods used in competition, multiple tee starts, it's recommended the last nine means ten through eighteen. But if everyone started on hole number one, you don't even have to clarify what last nine means.
What about like a shotgun start?
Um, oh, yeah, shotgun start. Yeah, I, shotgun start, you could do the same thing, just say it's holes ten through eighteen or what, whatever. I'm not, I'm not sure it really matters, just to pick some.
How about a random hole?
Yeah.
Pre-selected.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to say it's holes six through fourteen or whatever.
Well, more. What if you were to pick out the number one handicap hole, two, three, four?
Yeah, and I think, yeah, if you want to match cards based on the handicap number of holes, but that's fine.
That's important.
Yeah, yeah, what's here, this is what, it's interesting what the USGA says. It doesn't say the recommended method of matching cards is this, it says an acceptable method. So this just saying, this is one method of matching scorecards, really do whatever you want. So if you only do it based on the handicap holes, that's fine too.
Does the committee satisfy its obligation of the thirty-three dash four by simply handing out a scorecard that has, scorecard two that has a handicap hole listed on it?
The committee must publish a table. Oh, oh, so if the committee just gives the scorecard with the handicap?
That satisfies that requirement?
Yeah, even though it says they have to have a table?
Yeah.
Yeah, it does satisfy. Yeah, I think you argue that's just a horizontal table. All right, uh, last rule, rule thirty-four. Again, which focuses on the committee. Uh, thirty-four dash one, a claims in, uh, match play. Well, if a claim is lodged by the committee, and remember we talked about this in rule two dash five, a decision should be given as soon as possible so the state of the match may have necessarily be adjusted. And if a claim is not made in accordance with rule two dash five, then the committee should just say, uh, you know, I don't want to hear about it, figure it out for yourselves. Uh, and reminder, no penalty in match play or as we'll see in stroke play for applying the disqualification penalty for agreeing to waive the rules. In rule thirty-four dash one B, which sometimes takes a few times to read, uh, for it fully to sink in. In stroke play, a penalty must not be rescinded, modified, or imposed after the competition is closed, period. So just look at it. So we have a, after the competition is closed, you can't rescind a penalty, modify a penalty, or impose a penalty. And it goes on to say, when the competition is closed, when the results beneficial amounts, or when you have stroke play followed by match play, when the player's teed off in his first, uh, match. And some, some committees will go even further to say, uh, for example, that the competition is closed. At the Masters, for example, they say the competition is closed when the green jacket has been presented to the winner for the first time. Because they have the presentation buttered cabinet on television. Then after that, they have the presentation outside on the practice room. Uh, but they, they say it's planned to present the first time, that's the close of the competition. But there are, uh, four exceptions to when a penalty of disqualification will be imposed. So among other things, that means that under no circumstances may a penalty be rescinded or modified after the close of competition. But there are candy cases where a penalty of disqualification may be imposed. And that is if the player agreed to waive the rules, if he returned a scorecard in which he'd recorded a handicap that before the close of competition, he knew was higher than that to which he's entitled and this effect number of strokes received. Or three, if he returned a score for any hole lower than actually taken for any reason other than failure to include one or more penalty strokes that before the competition closed, he did not know he'd incurred. Or four, knew before a competition closed that he had been in breach of any other rule for which the penalty is disqualification, such as making a stroke with a non-conforming club. So let's back up to number three, because that's the one that probably brings up the most. That we'll, uh, let's say we go back and use the example of Craig Stabler kneeling on the towel. Uh, this, that happened during the third round of the tournament. And that's apply the two thousand sixteen rules to that, especially the new exception rule six dash sixteen. That happened on the fourteenth hole of the third round. If the committee had, uh, been made, made aware of this and caught him before he returned a scorecard, what would he have done? He would have added two penalty strokes to his score for that hole. Now, if the committee became aware of this after he had returned his scorecard for the third round, but before the competition closed the next afternoon, under the current rules, uh, what would the committee do?
Add four.
Add four penalty strokes, two penalty strokes for building a stance and two more penalty strokes for, uh, failing to include that penalty. So this is where that new exception rule six dash sixteen applies because he did not know he'd incurred the penalty and that's why he returned the incorrect score. But now, let's say Monday, after the tournament's over, the committee becomes aware that Stabler knelt on towel in the third round, he had not included the penalty. What would they do? Well, first, first they, they should call him and say, Craig, we understand you knelt on towel, is that right? Yep. Uh, did you know that was a breach of rules? Nope. So at that point, there would be, uh, no penalty. Now, let's say, so Stabler's off the hook in that case because the reason his score was lower than actually taken was that he had failed to include a penalty he was unaware of. Now, what if it was just a counting, uh, it was just a math mistake. A player made a seven on a hole and his marker lost track of the score and his marker put down a six. There were no penalty strokes involved, he hit the ball seven times. His marker put down, uh, his marker put down a six for the hole. Then the day after the competition, the committee realizes this mistake. Then what would be the ruling? Then the player would be disqualified because as he returned a score for any hole lower than actually taken and the reason was not his failure to include a penalty of which he was unaware. So, so the four times the committee may impose the penalty of disqualification. One, it's important to keep all this in mind and how this applies as we'll see with some decisions with committees and commit, uh, correcting committee errors. And that sometimes if the committee, uh, makes an error and let's say impose the penalty of two, a penalty of two strokes on a player, then after the close of competition, the committee says, geez, you know, we blew it. There should have been no penalty. What can the committee do at that point? At that point, nothing, because it can't rescind that penalty after the close of competition. And likely it would apply the same way. What if the committee had ruled at the time, no penalty, competition closed, and the committee says, you know what, we messed up, there should have been a two-stroke penalty? Then the committee cannot apply that two-stroke penalty after the close of competition. All right, uh, rule thirty-four dash two, a referee's decision, uh, is final. And we'll see a decision that what that means is that, uh, the player has no right to appeal. Doesn't mean that the committee may not correct an incorrect ruling made by referee. It just means that the player has no right, uh, to appeal the ruling. Thirty-four dash three, the committee's decision, uh, is final. If the committee can't come to a decision, it may refer the dispute to the USGA, whose decision's final. And if the dispute has not been referred to the USGA, then the players may request that an agreed statement be referred, uh, through the committee to the USGA. But the committee might always just say, uh, no, you know, we, we handled it, we don't need, uh, to get the USGA involved. Then last sentence is an interesting one. If play is conducted other than in accordance with the rules of golf, uh, the USGA will not give a decision on any, uh, question. And that's why, you know, strictly speaking, if you cut, tell, call the USGA and ask them about something that happens in a scramble term, they're going to say, you know, sorry, we can't help you. That decision says we won't, uh, give you an answer. All right, let's look at some, uh, decisions. Uh, thirty-four dash one B slash one point five, uh, is, uh, can be a useful one to know. In stroke play, A, in ignorance of the rules and with the concurrence of B, removes a stone from a water hazard. Subsequently, C tells him that A was in breach of rule thirteen dash four. A disagreed and he didn't ask the committee about it and returned a scorecard without including the two, two-stroke penalty. After the competition closed, C tells the committee of incident. Should A be disqualified? Answer is yes. That, and the key is in the final sentence, as C pointed out to A that he had perceived incorrectly and A took no action to check whether he had incurred a penalty before returning his card, A is deemed to have known he had incurred the penalty. Therefore, he can be disqualified under rule thirty-four dash one B.
That would also be the case before the close of the competition, as long as he had returned the scorecard, correct?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that's a good point as well with the new exception to six dash sixteen. If C report to the committee after the scorecard is returned before the close of the competition, he would be disqualified as well. All right, uh, thirty-four dash one B slash four, just emphasize, or it gives a good example of how a committee should approach, uh, a situation. It was reported a few days after the conclusion of a stroke play competition that the winner had changed the weight of his putter during a stipulated round. Should he be penalized? Well, it depends, the committee needs to, uh, uh, look into it. The committee must determine whether the competitor knew between the time of the breach and the close of competition that he had incurred a penalty under the rules for changing the weight of his putter during the round. If he knew he incurred a penalty, he's disqualified. Now, otherwise meaning if he did not know he incurred a penalty, then, uh, no penalty may be imposed at that time. All right, decision thirty-four dash two slash two is certainly a principle that the players are acutely aware of. In error, a referee authorized a player to infringe a rule of golf. Is the player absolved from penalty in such a case? And answer is yes, that a referee's decision is final whether or not the decision is correct. So, uh, players know full well that if you tell them, uh, they can do something, that they are not going to be penalized for doing it. And that's why players, you know, sometimes would try to bully officials into letting them, uh, take relief or drop in a certain area. Uh, thirty-four dash two slash three, uh, cer- certainly something that at a WSGA we advocate is that where, uh, possible or when possible to, uh, uh, warn a player from infringing a rule, try to keep a player from breaching the rules. Uh, the one time you have to be careful though is, as the final paragraph alludes to, is that in match play, if you're not assigned to, to accompany that specific match, then the referee has no authority to intervene. All right, thirty-four dash three slash one is, uh, is a useful, uh, decision. Now, during the first round of a thirty-six hole competition, the player plays a wrong ball for the sixth hole. He then rises, has played a wrong ball and corrects a mistake. Reports the facts to the committee and is incorrectly advised that he has incurred no penalty since the wrong ball was played from a hazard. During the second round, the committee realizes it made a mistake and retrospectively adds to the competitor's first round score two penalty strokes at the sixth hole. A competitor objects, saying, hey, the committee reached the decision the previous day and the rule says the committee's decision's final. Was the committee's procedure correct? Answer is yes. Uh, under rule thirty-four dash three, a committee's decision is final in that the competitor has no right to appeal. So that's really what final means. However, the rule does not prevent a committee from correcting an incorrect ruling and imposing or rescinding a penalty, provided that no penalty is imposed or rescinded after the competition is closed, except as provided in thirty-four one B. So the committee made this adjustment during the competition, so that was okay. If the committee had learned of, realized it's incorrect ruling after the competition was over, could they have gone back and added the two-stroke penalty? Answer is no. But in there, a somewhat similar incident occurred, remember the two thousand six US Women's Open? A player in the final group on her fifty-fourth hole, her ball was on the grass face of the bunker. In really tall grass, and she hit it out and, uh, the referee, observer with the group saw, didn't see anything unusual, but on TV, there was concern that she had double hit the ball coming out of the tall grass. So they again looked, looked at things and the referee, uh, interviewed the player after a round before she returned the scorecard. She said, look, I, I sure didn't think I hit it twice, I didn't feel it, I didn't, didn't feel like I hit it twice, didn't look like I hit it twice. And they even watched some replays in the scoring area saying, no, I, you know, I think I just hit it once. So then the referee said, okay, you know, you hit it once, no penalty, return your scorecard. So she did that, but then people continued to look at the video and became just more and more convinced that she had in fact hit the ball more than once. So what they, so, uh, they then decided that they would impose the one-stroke penalty under rule fourteen dash four, but obviously there would be no penalty for, under rule six dash six, for returning an incorrect scorecard. But she had done that on the basis of the ruling she had received from the committee. So the committee went back in and added one penalty stroke to her score for the eighteen hole and advised her of that during the, when she was on the third or fourth hole of the fourth round. So the committee can correct, uh, uh, penalties like that. You know, and obviously.
Play the hole after being informed.
Uh, you know, what, what's interesting, when she was informed, she was kind of relieved because she thought, oh no, does this mean I'm going to be disqualified for a scorecard error? So it was kind of a good news, bad news type thing. Well, good news is you're not disqualified, bad news is it is a one-stroke penalty. So she was okay with that. Uh, let's see, other decisions, uh, thirty-four dash three slash three point three. And this is a good companion, because wrong rulings are certainly a fact of life. And it's just a good idea to have a feel for how they can be remedied. When it's a matter of whether a player should or should not add two penalty strokes, that's fairly simple to fix. What's more difficult to fix is a case like this where a player's been told to play from a wrong place. And what, uh, what happens? So a player received ruling from member of the committee, plays from a wrong place. The committee then learns the incorrect ruling. What should the committee do? Well, unless a serious breach was involved, so unless the player gained a significant advantage by playing from that wrong place, uh, and unless the player was seriously disadvantaged because of playing from the wrong place, the strokes made after the incorrect ruling must end with no penalty. So the one, if the committee realizes this before the player plays from the next. So the one, if the committee realizes this before the player plays from the next team ground and it turns out the player did gain either a significant advantage or a significant disadvantage. Uh, then the committee could require him to, uh, correct the error and proceed correctly. But otherwise, say it's type of thing, a player's taking relief from a cart path and, uh, you, uh, go blank from then and tell him it's okay to drop two club links from the nearest point of relief instead of one club link. And the player plays and then you say, oh geez, you know, I should have said one club link. Well, they're just, you know, at that point, uh, you know, no penalty, player should not have to correct anything. But one point that is important is thinking not long-term, just beyond that hole, you want the player to know the right ruling. So at some point, whether it's during the round or after the round, depending on the situation, say the player, just so you know, on hole number six, I did give you a wrong ruling. I should have told you to drop within one club link of nearest point of relief rather than two club links. Because you don't want that player to make that same mistake, say in the next round and then be, uh, penalized for that. We want to make sure the player has a correct understanding of, uh, that rule.
Here's a, a question, a comment here. It says, a referee's decision is final, but the committee's is not. And I think what he's referring to is thirty-four two and thirty-four three. If a referee has been appointed by the committee, his decision is final. And I think he's taking that committee would have no.
Oh, why, I, I, there's a question online saying, well, the referee's deci- the committee's decision's final, the referee's is not.
No, but the referee's decision is final under rule thirty-four dash two. But the committee's is not questioned.
Oh, 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 no, I'm sorry. Both the referees and the committee's decisions are true, the same in terms of being final with each, in each case. Final meaning there's no further right of appeal. But that does not mean, as we've just seen, that a committee, a referee or a committee, uh, can still, um, uh, correct an incorrect ruling. Uh, let's see, let's look at decision thirty-four dash three slash four. Not that this happens a lot, but again, it just helps, um, frame how we would approach, uh, situations where there is a dispute as to what the facts are. In stroke play B, A's fellow competitor and marker claimed that A had played from outside the team ground fifteen. A stated he'd played from within the team ground. The committee ruled the claim was invalid because it was not made at fifteen T and because A disputed the claim. Was the ruling correct? All right, well, the committee's, um, reasoning is quite right, but let's see. What the answer is, it's a question of fact whether A played from outside the team ground. And the matter should be resolved on the basis of weight of evidence. The timing of a claim is not necessarily a factor. So that means then the committee should gather all available evidence and what evidence is there? It's really just A's word and B's word. And, and the way of evidence did not favor either competitor. In such a case, the benefit of the doubt should begin to A the player of the stroke. And then we'll have, uh, actually we'll see later, uh, what, uh, with the very last decision, uh, we'll talk more about how to resolve uh, questions of doubt. All right, decision thirty-four dash three slash six is a decision we've referenced a lot and to a large degree, it's a summary of uh, several decisions, uh, in the rules. But it's a helpful one because it tells, it offers some guidance as to what to do when a player proceeds under a ru- under a rule that does not apply and then makes a stroke. So let's look at some examples. Uh, and some of these, we're repeating ourselves from, uh, earlier, uh, this year. Decision eighteen dash two slash three, that's when the player's ball is near a boundary stake and he mistakenly thinks he gets, it's an obstruction, he gets relief from it, so he drops away from it and plays. And so now the committee has to say, okay, he dropped, he thought he was dropping into rule twenty-four, but in fact, rule twenty-four didn't apply. So we need to find a rule that we can use to judge his actions. Well, is there any other rule that could have applied to the situation where let him lift and drop the ball away? And, you know, intuitively you'd often think, well, what about the unplayable ball rule? Could be assigned that rule to him and then he might just get the one penalty stroke under that. But then this decision makes an important point with rule twenty-eight. Uh, rule twenty-eight requires the player to have the intention to proceed under it before lifting the ball. And since this player did not have that intention, the committee may not assign or apply rule twenty-eight to the player's actions. This next sentence is important also, as there's no rule that allowed the player to lift his ball in such a situation, the committee determined that rule eighteen dash two must apply. So in other words, as a last result, uh, they would apply rule eighteen dash two and say, the player lifted his ball without authority. He failed to replace it, so two penalty strokes under that rule. Now, let's contrast that with the next example, uh, in decision twenty dash seven slash two. Where the player's ball is in a water hazard. He deems it unplayable and I think he drops within, let's say, two club links of that spot inside the hazard. So he thought he was proceeding under rule twenty-eight, but as we saw last week, rule twenty-eight does not apply when the ball's in a water hazard. So therefore he dropped and played under an inapplicable rule. So what would the committee do? Well, again, what the committee would say, is there a rule that allowed this player to lift and drop a ball? Well, rule twenty-eight didn't, but rule twenty-six did. So they're going to say, okay, we're going to hold him by rule twenty-six. And rule twenty-six, he has options A, B, and C. And where he dropped and played from did not satisfy any of those options. So we're going to say that one, he has the penalty stroke for taking relief under rule twenty-six. And secondly, that he has two penalty strokes, two additional penalty strokes for playing from a wrong place under rule twenty-six. So even though he did not intend to use rule twenty-six, that is the rule the committee will use to judge his actions by. Uh, let's see. Uh, rule, uh, decision thirty-four dash three slash seven on the opposite page. Without getting it, where a player's ball and play moves and he's unsure whether he caused it to move. Player asks for a ruling. Based on the evidence available at the time, the referee determines the player did not cause the ball to move. And therefore he instructs the player to play the ball as it lies without penalty. Now, after the player plays, the committee assesses the same evidence or additional evidence that was not available at the time and determines that the player had caused the ball to move. Well, what do you? What, what is the ruling? Well, rule thirty-four dash three does not prevent a committee from changing a rule. Remember, when it says the committee's decision is final, it just means the player has no further right to appeal. As the player caused the ball to move, he was required to replace the ball. When he failed to do so, he played from a wrong place. However, as he did so at the instruction of a referee, he does not incur a general penalty under rule eighteen for playing from a wrong place. Nevertheless, he does incur the penalty stroke under rule eighteen dash two as he caused the ball to move before the ruling from the referee. So, player, uh, does something near his ball. He asked the referee, did I cause the ball to move? Referee, based on evidence at the time, says, no, you did not cause the ball to move. No penalty, play the ball as it lies. Player does so, then the referee says, oh, you know, I messed up. Uh, there should have, I should have told the player, replace the ball with a one-stroke penalty. So first, we're not going to penalize the player for playing from a wrong place because he played from a wrong place at instruction of the committee member. But the player is going to incur the one-stroke penalty for causing the ball to move because of the sequence of events because he had incurred that penalty stroke before he asked for a ruling, before the wrong ruling was given. All right, and then we'll finish with the very last decision, thirty-four dash three slash nine. Uh, that among other things helps put officiating in perspective. Uh, with the very first sentence, resolving questions of fact is among the most difficult actions required of a referee or is the committee of the whole. That often we, you know, while we sit around this table, we might think, oh, the most difficult thing to do would be a deal with a player's ball is in casual water, that's inside ground under repair, that's right next to a cart path, dealing with all that. And, you know, that can be difficult. But what's often most difficult is just determining the facts, determining did the player cause the ball to move? Is their knowledge virtual? Certainly the ball's in a water hazard. Uh, where did the ball last cross the hazard of the margin or the margin of the hazard? And it goes on to say, second paragraph, in all situations involving questions of fact, resolution of the doubt must be made in light of all the relevant circumstances and evaluation of the weight of evidence, creating the balance of probabilities. When the committee is unable to determine the facts to its satisfaction, it must resolve the matter in the fairest way. So first point, the committee needs to, uh, uh, do what it can to gather all available evidence and usually that is testimony by the players and, uh, anyone else, uh, who is there. It does caution us though that there's no hard and fast rule for evaluating the testimony of the players or for assessing the weight to be given such testimony, the situation must be treated on its own merits. Because you could have a case, for example, where a fellow competitor says, you know, I know for sure that, uh, that ball went in the water hazard. But then when you talk to him and you realize where he was standing to observe this, that he was watching all of this through a tree and really couldn't have seen anything, then, you know, you might not put that much uh, uh, weight on what he says. Now, testimony of those who are not part of the competition, including say, returns to be accepted and evaluated. It's also appropriate to use television footage to assist in resolving doubt. And, you know, and that's one point to keep in mind. Some people will get all worked up about, uh, a television viewer who calls in and says, oh, I saw Craig Stather kneel on towel and he was, oh, can't do that in basketball or football. Why shouldn't you be able to do that in golf? And, you know, one reason is that the golf rules are written with a mechanism for later penalties in mind. It is a way to apply that, that the, that the other sports lack. And also in golf, uh, especially in stroke play, the key is not so much who reported, who reports the breach, it's simply whether the breach occurred. That if, I mean, what really matters is whether Craig Stather did in fact kneel on towel to play, play the shot. Really doesn't matter whether it's fellow competitor, whether a marshal, whether a spectator, uh, whether a rules official twenty yards away or a television viewer three thousand miles away saw that. What it ultimately comes down to is, did he do that? And if he did it, then it makes sense for him to, uh, be penalized. All right, it's important that any questions of fact be resolved in a timely manner. And that's, uh, it's an interesting decision. And what it says is that there's, you'll notice there are some decisions in the book where you say the weight of evidence is given to the player or the, the benefit of the doubt is given to the player. There are other decisions say the benefit of that was resolved against the player and there's not a clear, as it says, a hard and fast rule as to when, uh, where to get the benefit of the doubt. But it's, uh, it's really taken a page to say being a referee can be a difficult, uh, difficult assignment. And, uh, good luck with it. So with that, that will conclude our, our, our sessions. And, you know, thank, I want to thank you all for, uh, coming. This really says a lot about the WSGA for the time you all put in both, uh, during the, uh, season, but especially during the off-season. And we, and it's absolutely invaluable and that's one reason we have such a, or very big reason why we have such a strong association. So really thank you all for all the time that you put in. And, you know, as to what we will do next winter, we'll have to see. We're not going to have a series of review sessions like this. You know, in part because after, now that it's been recorded, uh, you just go back and listen to it rather than have me repeat the same stories and same still jokes. Uh, but and also in all candor because next year with the US Open coming on, uh, it might be a kind of a busy winter, but safe to say that we will do something to get together next year because obviously can't go six months without, uh, seeing all you guys. But, you know, we even, even.
Especially Dan.
Yeah.
How about golf in Florida or Arizona?
Exactly. So we could have our first WSGA, uh, Rules Committee Retreat. No, but, you know, at least we, I mean, we can get together once or twice just for a question, answer session or something like that. But again, I thank you all for, for everything you do and I look forward to seeing you out on the golf course, uh, this, uh, this season.
Thank you for John.
One follow-up question I didn't get. Where in rule twenty-eight does it say it requires a player to have the intent to proceed under it before he's left the hole? Where does it say that in rule twenty-eight?
That's the meaning of D.
That's what?
The meaning of D.
That's your answer? The word D means.
Yes, D means that you have the intent.